Welcome everyone and welcome to the July City Council Meeting for the city of Waynesville. We have quite a crowd tonight and Mr. Wallace, of course, is up in the video desk and we are on Facebook and we will be on YouTube. And I gave Mr. Wallace a compliment earlier. I said, "His kids are all off on summer break and he still has to do the work." So he's up there and we appreciate you, Mr. Wallace. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mayor Hardman.
Here.
Councilman Hardman.
Here.
Councilman Davis. Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilman Curtis.
Here.
Councilman Brown.
Here.
Councilman Liberty.
Here.
Councilman Conley.
Here.
Very good. And of course Cecil's off on a trip. His wife made him go, I was told. Okay? At this time, we're going to have an invocation. And Mike, if you would come up to the podium. Mike Wells is not only the pastor of the Spearhead Church, he's my old friend and my old student.
That's right.
And I'm thrilled to have you here.
It's nice.
And most of you have heard me say this, but as I'm ending my last year as mayor of Waynesville, I've been honoring our churches and been honoring the different volunteers who've done so much for our community. And so tonight, we honor Mike Wells and his new congregation. And again, it's called the Spearhead Church. If you would stand with me as we say the invocation and remain standing as our honoree tonight and Assistant Scout Master is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you all. Let's bow our heads. God in heaven, I just thank you. I thank you for each and every heart in this room, the time they give the opportunity to come and just serve you and serve our city, God. We just pray and ask for your wisdom. Your word tells us if we ask for it, God, you will give it out generously. So we just pray now that you will give us your wisdom, God, to lead this town, to make the decisions needed, to make this an even better place than it already is. We thank you for the town we live in. We thank you for the servants, like each person here gathered tonight, God, that just want to serve their community, want to serve you, Lord. We ask that you just rid us of any selfish ambition, any of our own agendas, God, and that we'll just serve the people and ultimately serve you, Lord. Thank you again for the town we live in, the country we live in, God, and all that you give us. We know every good and perfect gift comes from you, Lord, and we're so grateful to serve you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Mike, I would like to say that that's probably one of the best legislative prayers that I've ever heard.
Thank you.
I think you hit every category.
That's good.
So we're proud, proud to have you here. At this time, we're going to begin our meeting and our first item tonight is the Consent Agenda. And for you scouts in the audience, we do a consent agenda so that we don't have to do every little thing and take really unnecessary time to pass them. So I would entertain a motion for the Consent Agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Clarence, second by Ed. All those in favor? That unanimous? And then we come to the best part of the meeting. I always say that. The best part of the meeting is always when we have citizens' comments. And Michelle, please remind me to allow citizens' comments when I get through with all the talking. But we are honored tonight to have Major General Donna Martin, the commanding general of the United States Army Maneuver Support Center of Excellence at Fort Leonard Wood. And can I say also, my friend, General Martin and I have become very good friends and in fact, I've become friends with your husband, Chris, retired Colonel from the Marine Corps and very proud, of course, of everything that he's doing. She asked me, by the way, you have to do a bio, you know, because she's the jingle. But she hates these long-winded bios. And so I asked Steve in the office, "Give me a short one," and they did. Okay? "In this capacity as commander, General Martin oversees the development of capable and adaptive leaders and warriors. Major General Martin is the lead in total Army Engineer, Chemical, Military Police, and Maneuver Support Capability Development." I was afraid, General Martin, I was going to have to say, "Chemical, Biological, Radiological, and Nuclear." "The maneuver support skills and tools necessary for mission success across the range of military operations." General Martin has served in the Army for thirty years and took command as the Chief of the MP Corps and Commandant of the Military Police School here at Fort Leonard Wood. And I believe that's where I first met you, where she oversaw the training and development of military police soldiers and leaders. Again, General Martin is well-respected in this community. Every time I mention that I'm friends with her, I think I go up a notch, you know, with people. And I feel very lucky to be your friend. Over the years, I've had, since I've been mayor, I've had four generals. And we've always invited them to come. And I believe we've had three come over the years. I'll tell you who didn't come. We welcome you, Donna. You've been here since last year, General Martin. But we welcome you to our community. And I ask her tonight, I'm going to ask her to come up and just say a word to the community and tell us maybe a little bit about her, if you would do that, General Martin, Major General Martin, everybody.
So Mayor Hardman, fellow city councilmen, thank you for that very kind introduction. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. And on behalf of the military members and families who serve at Fort Leonard Wood, I tell you, we enjoy such a strong personal and working relationship with the city and people of Waynesville. We're very fortunate to have such an outstanding support. And I got to tell you, we don't take that for granted. Thank you for your selfless work and everyday efforts to ensure that citizens and residents, including our service members and their families, enjoy an amazing quality of life. You are the fine examples of the America Harry Truman referenced when he said that our nation was built on courage, on imagination, and unbeatable determination to do the job at hand. So thank you for that determination. Thank you for all you do to govern and prosper this great city. It is a welcoming and safe place to live with great neighbors and the setting of a world-class school district. And thank you for your personal service to the public and to government. So I'm honored and appreciative of this opportunity to be the guest of my friend, Mayor Hardman. And so, Luge, I would beg your forgiveness as I break a little from protocol
Please.
to present you a small gift
Oh.
from me to you. It depicts our close ties that you talked about. And it is often said on Fort Leonard Wood that it's sure to be a great event with lasting memories if Mayor Hardman attends. And I can tell you, Luge, my mom always believed and taught me
Don't make me cry.
I know. Okay. She taught me that it takes a village to raise good citizens. And I want to thank you for being a part of our village. So.
Guys, I don't know if you've seen this or not, but it's a puzzle.
And the five hours that it took for Djokovic to beat Federer, I did this.
That is so special.
Some very special moments.
Well, and I'm looking around at all these special friends that we've made.
In the middle, it says, "Thank you for your leadership. We love you, Luge. You're a Fort Leonard Wood Military Family."
Wow. So one thing that General Martin and I have in common is that we've both recently lost our mothers. And so she lost her mother just this past year. And so we have commiserated, commiserated a lot about that. So let me gather my thoughts. Just a minute. Just take me a minute. I think I'm all right. Okay. So again, one of the joys of being mayor is recognizing people. And I have asked my friend, General Martin, to help me tonight with this presentation. So Steve, you're going to have quite a surprise here in just a moment. Let me just say a few words about Steve. Again, I have been honoring my volunteers. Last month, we had Janet Kreider. I believe next month, we have the American Legion, Bob Norris, in the American Legion. So these are people that have helped me be a successful mayor. And when I give this award tonight to Steve, I'm giving it to all you Scouts leaders. All of you. I simply work with Steve and have worked with him on several projects. He's been very open and always available. You that have been with the Scout Program for a while know that I honored Dwayne Martin when he was here. I love the Scouts. You know, when you want something done in a city, call the Scouts. Because they're there. And then oddly enough, Mr. Steve has been with the scouting program for twenty years. And by the way, there's another Mr. Steve in here and I just want to say one word. I won't say much. Steve, I don't even know your last name.
Stanford.
Stanford, okay. Steve is with the PAO Office at Fort Leonard Wood. He's an Eagle Scout. Right here, guys. Eagle Scout. That's really something great. Well, Steve Arring, if you come on up here, Steve, I'm going to talk about you and embarrass you, has been with scouting for twenty years. Not only was he a scout, Mike France, of course, big in scouting also, but Steve was an Eagle Scout also. So y'all need to shake hands. Steve joined PAC 202 in Waynesville in January of 2016. And he joined the troop in 2018. In fact, he just returned from Iowa. I was following y'all's adventures on Facebook, where he took eleven scouts to outdoor activities. He has been den leader for two years, an Assistant Cub Master, and PAC Secretary. He has also worked with Troop I of the Scouts, right? Is that how you say it? Troop I?
Troop 202. Oh, for, yeah, it's Troop 202.
202, okay. As Assistant Scout Master, I said that, and Outdoor Activity Chairman. And then is your wife here?
She is.
Hi, Chelsea. His wife is Chelsea. They have three children, Kyle, Tyler, and was that Emma that was saying hi to us? Hi, Emma. We are thrilled to have Steve in our community. And can I say that Steve is another very good example of your military, General Martin? Steve is an active-duty military. He's been in the Army since 2005. And I believe he is PCSing on us. So I bet you Scouts back there are going to miss him. Yeah, you're going to miss him. But I believe you're off to Fort Rucker.
Yes.
Okay. So we have
Unless you've deleted my orders.
I don't know. I know the general. So come over here, Steve. General Martin, if you would join us. First of all, I'm going to give you a coin from the city. That's for you. We appreciate everything you've done. And I have a Good Citizen Award for Steve for the month of July. General Martin?
All right.
There we go.
Thank you so much.
I was looking down, Steve. I apologize. Go ahead. We broke the camera.
And I was told I had to get a good picture of this one.
Oh, yes. I want a good one. Very good. One more? And General Martin, would you like to say a few words to your soldier?
I just want to, you know, I want to tell you, Sergeant Eric, okay, that this is exactly what we say "right" looks like. It's one of ours who is embedded in your community who builds the relationship. Because I think sometimes people are turned off by the gate and you think that there's something very mysterious behind the gate. There isn't, but there are wonderful people like him who knit this community with its military family. And so we're extremely proud of you. Thank you so much, Mayor.
And, okay, that's a real funny. Okay? And if Chief Cordova would come up? Chief Cordova, if you would stop and introduce yourself to the general there on your way. Since you're both, since you're both law enforcement people. Very good. I believe we've tried a couple of months to do this. And we've had trouble getting them here. But let you talk a little bit and then we'll have them come up.
Tonight, I'd like to say a big thank you to Scott Levin and Ron Timmons. Now, Scott is the Director of Safety and Security for the Ozark Technical College here. And one of the things that they do, he's right over there in blue. Raise your hand.
Come on up. Come on up. Come on up, guys. Might as well have you here talking about you. Okay, so this is Scott.
One of the things that they do, and they've decided to do, is they've assisted our agency by offering employment as extra duty to our officers. It does a couple of things for us. It allows our officers to make a little bit more money because as we all know, police officers don't make, we're never going to be rich. I'll just leave it like that. And having been prior to law enforcement, they improved our city. They've approved our department by simply keeping a very high standard with the extra-duty officers. They provide firearms training at a level that we couldn't do ourselves. And they do it at no cost to our city. Not only do they do it for the extra-duty officers that work for OTC, but they also do it for all the officers in the Waynesville Police Department. And they've always been there for us and they've always taken absolutely great care of us. Their classes and their training is top-notch. And we're just lucky to have them in our community because without them, the Waynesville Police Department wouldn't be who we are. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you go ahead and go ahead and sit down. Come on. Scott?
Thank you very much, Mayor Hardman.
Thank you.
And thank you from the city. Come in here and we'll, come on over and we'll have a picture together. I'll get on the other side here. General Martin, you want in this one too?
Yeah.
Come on. These guys will love this.
It's going to be an extra charge for them.
That's, that's pretty good. This is, I say this is tall cotton. We're in tall cotton tonight. Okay, here we go. All right. Congratulations.
Can I just say here? Okay, I'll just take it.
This will be, this will be exciting. Okay. So we have one more little thing. This is a, okay, very good. Got it. Always have the copies. It's done, the original. Well, two months ago, I believe two months ago, we started a new program in Waynesville called Business Spotlight. And so we are spotlighting businesses that are nominated from our community for the effect and the service that they give. And this is our first month. So I'd like to bring up the people from Communication for Research. Guys, this is Jason Laura, Misty Summerhill, and Colson Steber, who I believe is the CEO. And let me just say a few words here and then they can say a few if I don't say what you need to say, Colson. You can chime in. But I actually was your nominator because I had gone to Chamber and heard your story. Now, I knew you guys were there. Guys, this is the Call Center from Townville Plaza. Y'all know what I mean. They're the Call Center. Well, they're much more than the Call Center, right? I was amazed at how many people you employ there and the future plans that you have. Communications for Research is a market research company. And that means they do surveys, focus groups, but that's not all. They manage research process, the process. They collect data to inform decisions. CFR has been in Waynesville since 2001 and I did not know that. The company has a team of over a hundred and thirty people at their office in Eichardt Center, which again is Townville Plaza, which makes up seventy-five percent of the people that work at your company. Over the past year, CFR has invested themselves in growing their team, improving the work environment, and expanding the Waynesville office as the company revenues grew thirty percent in one year. They say their goal is to build a community within CFR that creates opportunities to advance, offers valuable skills, and helps everyone that works with us to grow. We're a great place to work for military families and for people who benefit from setting their own schedule. So for you who did not know what the Call Center was all about, aren't you glad you came tonight? Okay? And this is the Communications for Research. We're so thrilled to have you here. And what a special night for you to be here. How many, do you know how many military employees you have in Waynesville? Quite a few?
A lot of spouses.
A lot of spouses?
Yeah.
Very good. Well, we're excited to have you guys here. And if you want to, do you want to say anything else, Colson? Did I leave anything out?
You summed it up pretty good. We help people make better, more informed decisions with data. Everything we do is primary custom research, which means it's like individually going out to people and getting answers, which is why we have a Call Center to do so. Don't sell things. So you can send people there to work there. And they should enjoy it. And Misty is the beautiful face of our company.
She's the manager? Is she the manager?
The HR manager.
Okay, HR.
In charge of bringing everyone in to get them to work.
Very good.
So come see Misty.
Okay. And then would you, real quick, Amber, would you tell the audience what we are offering our Business Spotlight people?
There is, of course, a proclamation from the mayor. And then you guys are allowed to bring anything marketing for your company to City Hall for the rest of the month of July. So if you want to bring more hiring, anything, you can put it in the lobby. On Facebook, we've been posting information about your business throughout the month. And then we also have some free advertising on the city of Waynesville's website that links directly to your site.
Very good. So that's kind of a special deal. And we're excited that our Economic Development Committee started that. And so these guys are our first. So if you take a picture for us, Amber, and we'll get this to you guys, okay? All right. All right. Thank you. Well, guys, we're going to let Major General Martin
Go back to work.
go back to work. And we're going to let you lead because now we get down to kind of the, you know, nitty-gritty stuff. You know, you, it's going to be very interesting. You'll see how the Scouts say. And then we got work on the badge for local government and that type of stuff. I gotta clean up.
Always looking for leaders to come back to the troop.
I gotta quit this gig first.
Guys, that was pretty special. Enjoyed that lot and enjoyed having the Scouts here, enjoyed having Major General Martin here. And now we do have the process of letting our citizens approach the, discuss things with the City Council. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the City Council, please come forward. Okay, I'm seeing none. We're going to go ahead with our Board and Commission reports. Do I?
I'm sorry.
Sure, come on up.
I had something there, but I don't, I was just informed that maybe there's a committee or something else.
Just tell me what it is.
It's about the WSR.
Uh huh.
Soccer fields, the fields and baseball fields and stuff like that.
That's our Park Board.
And I went to the Park Board last week and said, "Come up, take a look." And
Kind of the city sat and we'll discuss with our youth sports director and our partner.
Right. Mr. Harold, take care of you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're usually pretty good at that. So just come and see Mr. Harold. Okay? Anything else? All right, Park Board. Mr. Beamer? See if you can follow that, Lawrence.
Yeah. That was really great.
And I see Amanda's with us tonight. Good to be here. Good to see you.
And hopefully a future member of the Park Board. Okay, our meeting was held at the Pavilion and Park over on Hull Road, Hull Valley Road, Tiger Park. And we also had an ice cream truck there, which I guess had something to do with filling the pavilion up.
Was there a lot of people?
There was over thirty people. So we had quite a bit of ice cream going out there. And our visitors, of course, with thirty neighbors and Councilman Liberty was there, which I appreciate when he comes to our meetings. We had a member, his name's Rip Vernon, a member of the Board. And I wished him well. And I talked back and forth. And he's, he's going to be concentrated on football this time. He thought he couldn't do what he needed to to keep with the Board. So we lost another member. So we need two more. And hopefully after tonight, we will have two more. And we were one man short. So we did not get to pass the June minutes. So we pushed it till next, next August meeting. Now, Plasky County Masters Gardeners, basically the demonstration garden is on point. I happened to be this last Saturday at the Where do you sell?
Farmers Market.
Farmers Market. And I was there for quite a while and I was talking to Councilman Liberty and watching things and saw people actually going up on top of the hill to look at that den. And that's even without a sign. So hopefully we'll get a sign up pretty soon and get more visitors up there. Along with that, they came up with an idea of people that visited, get to paint a rock and have a rock up there with their name, where they're from. They're working on that right now. How about to do that? August twentieth, they have a Master Gardeners Course. It's for a hundred and twenty-five dollars. It's a fifteen-week course. That's about all from there. The sports program. Erin was there and told us that the summer sports is over. And she was able to give out appreciation certificates to five coaches. And their names are Nicholas, I hope I don't get these names bad.
Vela.
Vela. And Andrew Chavez. And Josh and Matt Rump. And Mackenzie Price. And they did have a lot to say. And I was glad that Erin was there to answer some of their questions. And that's about all she did. Now, the Park Superintendent had a really big, big report. And it was all one word, "Grass and tree removed." Grass, grass, grass. That's what they've been doing. And plus, he's been keeping an eye on the spray park.
And I believe the spray park is down today.
Yes. And we're going to be working on it tomorrow. I think the spare pump didn't work either when you put it in. So we'll see if there's electrical problem or other problem tomorrow. So we'll see if there's electrical problem or other problem tomorrow and see if we can get it solved.
Hopefully by the afternoon. We'll try, we'll try.
Okay.
It's just a terrible time to be down.
That might be why there wasn't too many people down that way. They might have some food. And it was a hot day, too. And also, it's being discussed, he reported it's being discussed, put cameras for the outside of bathrooms, not inside, outside.
Of course.
And for the Little Heroes playground. Plus, the parking lot over by the playground is now no longer rocky, it's paved. And it really looks nice. Glad to see that done. On our park updates, basically, we didn't have any basic updates on any of the parks. So we basically went into discussing type of park and believing it was a lot of discussions. I didn't even get out of there till eight o'clock.
That neighborhood really enjoys that park.
We also have, we have a lady there that started planting flowers underneath the sign now.
They used to have an annual picnic there. Yes, and it was a big deal.
Well, that was actually mentioned. They needed tables there. There's only one table, it's not too good shape. They've had problems with tables. So Superintendent Brown and myself came up with a plan, of which we'll be discussing later on. Hopefully, we'll be able to get it done for the next month.
We also got a grant for some more picnic tables in our parks, in different parks, so you'll be seeing those in there.
We need indestructible ones for down there.
Well, and something that we can, something we can literally chain or tie down.
Well, we've got that figured out also. We're gonna present it and see what happens. It's a real simple deal. And so, anyway, there's a lot of questions. I wanted to thank Councilman Curtis and Councilman Liberty for being there. They were able to ask, be asked questions at what's in our rental about parking and things like that. And they were able to take care of that. Plus, Park Superintendent Brown was able to answer some questions. And I guess he didn't answer them all. But everybody hung around for a long time, and I'm glad they did. And there was a lot of discussion. During that meeting, we had, I believe she's nine years old. I forgot what her name was. What was her name?
Rebecca.
No.
Oh, the daughter.
The daughter was there. Rebecca was there.
Annalee.
Annalee.
Yes. And she wants some slides. She wants a little bit of everything. So we're already coming up with a plan to get most of what she wants. Not gonna be able to get everything she wants, we don't have so much room down there.
Will you be sure to tell Annalee that her name was spoken at city council and we all heard her request? And we will work on it.
Right. And basically, those are the two things during the meeting. The picnic tables, let's start having events there again. We had so many people, the pavilion was completely full. And we had five picnic tables there. Superintendent, Park Superintendent Brown was able to bring four down there for a short time for us to use. But there was a lot of folding chairs, too, brought down there, so it was full. And the ice cream truck, the, they're getting ready to move to Waynesville. It lives about a hour out, so Jack's will be working out of Waynesville. We had a short meeting, so.
While you're up here, Lawrence, and I think that Bruce and I had discussed this, but Bruce, would you, I want to talk a little bit about vandalism. And I believe we had discussed, mentioned this, and maybe in also police committee? Is it in police committee report? We're very concerned here in the city about vandalism in our park. And, you know, when you go and destroy toilets, you stand on the toilets and jump on the toilets till they're all broken? There's something the matter with you. I'm just telling you. There's something the matter with you. You need to get some help. That is beyond fun. But we've had all our toilets destroyed. We have had graffiti. We have had, you know, spray paint on the croker down at the Little Heroes. And I will just tell you, we're putting in cameras. Right, Mr. Harold, we are researching that.
We have some in certain areas and we're gonna put some more cameras in, too, Mayor. And some of those incidents are under investigation by the police.
Very good.
And I'd rather not go into any more specific details.
Very good. But I just want the public to know, though, that we take this serious. And, you know, we do have some cameras there, but they're not everywhere. So now we're going to invest in making it a bigger coverage. And we've got to stop this. You know, there's thousands of dollars of our tax money being used for things that should not be done. And, you know, I tell you what, as a parent, if I came, my kid came home with a bill like that, there could be some big old talking going on. And probably some other things. What do y'all think? Okay. So anyway, I hope everybody takes that to heart. And, you know, if you see something, call 911. And say, "Hey, there's people down here." You know, I shouldn't tell all this, I guess. But I was at an event at the stage. And I had important people with me. And in front of us, we had to stare at the F-word that somebody had written on our stage. It's so disrespectful. And, you know, parents, do some talking to your kids. And let's see if we can get this stopped. It's ridiculous. Okay, thank you, Lawrence. And now we're gonna take care of your business, okay? We have a resignation letter from Rick Vernon and all of us know Coach Vernon. Coach Vernon has given several years to the park board. And we do have a new city clerk. And she has begun preparing certificates of appreciation for the people that serve on our committees. And I was able to go and give that to Rick. And you, council people have a copy of it in your file. We were excited for Rick to be on our board. And something, again, that mayors are very thankful for in a town is the willingness of people to serve. And David, I apologize, I should have recognized you. David Carpenter and my old friend, Joe Mott, have both agreed to be on the park board. I do not have a bio for them. David, I believe lives over by me. Joe lives over by you, I believe.
I'm not sure.
But they're both in the city limits. Guys, I have appointment letters for both of these men. And couldn't we just do them all at once? Is that okay? Because obviously, we want to give them opportunity to serve. And first of all, appreciate them being willing to serve. So I entertain a motion for both of these gentlemen to be appointed to the park board.
Moving.
Motion by Clarence, second by Mike France. And I believe that will be very easy for everybody to say. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. David, welcome to the park board. We appreciate your willingness to serve. And Joe is, I believe he's still in Europe. So hopefully he'll be, hopefully he'll be in home soon. So, thank you, Lawrence. You do a great job.
Thank you.
And council, and did you get this? Do you have a copy of this? Why don't you come get mine? Everybody has a copy of the park board there for future reference.
Our next park board meeting will be at the Farmer's Market.
Okay.
And it will be on the eighth of August.
Very good. Farmer's Market, eighth of August. Any questions for Lawrence? Thank you, Lawrence. Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, David. Okay, we have planning and zoning, and Councilman Davis is not here. And I'm a member of that committee. You want me to do it, Bruce, or do you want to do it?
I can do it, Mayor.
Why don't you do it? And I believe we have Mr. Mayhew with us.
Okay, Mayor, our meeting was on July ninth. Of course, we had a forum. Our only action item was the re-subdivisions of lots up in the Briar Point area, flat five. And the, Mr. Mayhew, the engineer for the developer, was there. And they talked about their plan. And we reviewed the plan to modify six lots and creating additional smaller lots. And those lots are not big enough to build houses on, but they're going to, to take, put, take those lots and include them on the lots, adjoining lots on Woodland Hillside to make those lots on Woodland Hills a little bit bigger. And they would have a little better setback for the backyard to work the backyard and make sure there's enough easements there. And that passed. And you do have a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve this replat that you have before you. And we do have a stipulation on there that you can't build on those lots and they have to be donated, those lots, smaller lots have to be given to the lots, course line lots on Woodland Hills. And we'll turn it over to Mr. Mayhew to give you more of the details.
I brought you a handout. There, you'll have three things in there. One is a copy of the tax map. It shows the two subdivisions together, all in one place. And then the other two are the recorded, or the plat, and then the proposed plat that we're talking about today.
I'm obviously very much aware of this territory.
Yes.
And Sean is, too, I believe.
There's a, yeah. I would say you're spitting distance from it. Unless we say you have the crocker.
There's my house.
Yeah.
Okay, questions? He does have a, of course, I guess you're looking at the same thing, so. Any questions? We had a lot of discussion about this at our city council, at our planning and zoning meeting. But I would tell you that there really wasn't anything here except just a change to the lots. Any questions? Okay? No questions?
Thank you very much.
And we have an ordinance concerning this. It's ordinance 2370. Counselor?
Thank you. An ordinance approving a re-subdivision of Briar Point subdivision Phase Four, fixing infected date. And ordinance approving the re-subdivision of Briar Point subdivision Phase Four, fixing infected date.
I would entertain a motion. Motion by Sean. Second by Jerry, Dr. Brown. And any questions or comments? Madam Clark, would you call the robe?
Councilman Farner.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Toddley.
Yes.
Councilman France.
Yes.
And that ordinance passes.
Thanks, Colonel.
Okay, we have Roads and Grounds Committee, and that's Councilman France.
I called the committee to order at four o'clock on the 11th. All members were present. There was no one to really speak to us. Mr. Harold presented a copy of the current improvement plan, and which was approved by a two-thirds majority. Review of the Waynesville Memorial Cemetery rules and regulations, which was brought about by a comment to the city about some, actually, they thought they were grade markers, they turned, were survey markers that are, you know, round discs in the ground. Basically, we voted to not do anything and uphold the rules that are currently established by our credit sensors. Research requests name change for Bluff Circle. There was also a citizen who requested that we look into changing the name of Bluff Circle. We did get feedback from the 911 folks that talked to the measures that would have to take place to make that happen. And we determined that with just one person actually requesting it, that we were not going to take any action whatsoever in regard to changing the name.
Was she interested in carrying it on, though, with more people asking, or?
I told her she probably needed to get a petition of the citizens. So far, that has not occurred.
Was she wanting to name it after a person?
I'm not sure, Mayor. We didn't get that far of further the process.
Thank you.
Recreational Trail Grant. Our executive assistant's been working on that for months and months and a few more months. And we finally got the, received a letter to proceed from Missouri State Parks Division of DNR. She stated that we are waiting a no-ride certificate from FEMA because it happens to be in the twenty-two feet into the flow area. So we're waiting on that.
Point two.
Unless it has arrived. What?
Point two-two.
Oh, point two-two. Yeah. So less than, less than a quarter of a foot. So we're a little, a little under the curve. Community Assistance Program Agreement stated that we have received letters from the Missouri Department of Conservation regards to the CAT program. And remember, we've worked with them in the past to try and improve the fishing and Ruby Doo and that. And so we'll be assisting in several communities and partners to revise and update the CAT agreement. Stated that this will help the city determine what can be done to improve the property around the Ruby Doo and improve the fishing spots that we have. Park Security stated he is looking at ways to increase park security due to vandalism. He said the electric department is looking into what can be done to install the equipment we need. Mainly because it will all require some degree of electricity as well as, why, if you can't monitor it. So that's where we're at right now. Street Department update, Brian Adams stated that they've completed seventeen work orders, two utility cuts, worked on the Mitchell Creek, removed trees near Mitchell Creek and Dyer Street because we've got some bank erosion that, very simply, we didn't do that. We'd have trees into there which would exacerbate our issues there. Project to get it underway. GW Lane, if you've noticed, Willard Asphalt's been out there working, putting in the road bed and starting the asphalt. Weather Committee.
I think we did a lot, most of all that work.
We did a lot of that work. Hopefully, they may start asphalting tomorrow or early next week.
Very good.
Weather dependent.
Something I wanted to mention. I get a few of these unsigned letters from people. You know, anonymous letters. And I, in fact, got two last week. And one of them was concerning what you were just talking about, the conservation area. And this man seemed to think that the city owned that property and we were allowing our employees and our friends to hunt on it. I believe that's what I got from it, Mitch. Did you get that?
Yeah.
Let me clarify. If that anonymous person is listening, let me clarify that we do not own that property. The Conservation Department owns most of that property back behind the sewer plant. And if there's any hunting going on there, it's allowed by the Conservation Department. It has nothing to do with the city of Waynesville. You cannot hunt in the city of Waynesville with a gun or with archery unless you're on certain properties. And that would be agriculture, is that correct? We don't have very many of those. So this man definitely had his facts wrong. And so I wanted to clarify that. Hopefully, Darrell, you'll be reading your blog. And you can say that the mayor is telling him, "We don't own that property and we would not be allowing our friends to hunt on it," okay? It was quite an interesting, entertaining letter. Okay, any questions for Mike? All right, utilities. Mike, keep talking.
I called that meeting to order at 3:30 on the second of July. My council people, fellow council persons were on, were available. And so we were initially addressed by some citizens in regard to low water pressure in the vicinity of the Spring Street. And basically, after listening to them and talking to Jack, our water and sewer supervisor and Mr. Harold, we basically approved a project that will cost approximately five thousand to tie in existing lines and do a four-inch line extension to them. Their water pressure in some instances was down to about eighteen pounds. So, you know, that's kind of like a drill. Anyhow, so that will be taking place in line with projects that are currently planned, which they're working through. Sewer replacement, the vicinity of Home Street. Mr. Harold stated that we are scheduled to replace the sewer line along with a trade cost share agreement to be made with the homeowner, which was started on eight July. It has been completed successfully. Right now, the dirt been back in to the trench. And we're gonna let it settle for a bit before we go back and fix the lawn. Tower six drain line. Mr. Harold stated that a dedicated drain line is scheduled to be installed August 5th for that tower. Northern Heights tank update. Mr. Harold stated the valves worked along with a dedicated fill line going to the tank is scheduled. And the tank delivery date is tentatively scheduled for sometime in mid-September, around 16. Well two rebuilt is going exceedingly well and should be completed very soon. Sewer line to industrial park. Mr. Harold stated that this has been put back to a later start date due to other projects that have priority that the city is currently working on. Reconductori feeder lines. Mr. Sheldon presented pictures showing, committee, where is the department? Will be replacing twelve new poles and wires to update feeder line B. Feeder line C and D tie-in. Mr. Sheldon stated that his department will be completing that feeder line tie-in, which was part of our capital improvement program for this year. Pole replacement. We had a study done and they showed us that fourteen poles needed to be replaced throughout the city area after that testing. And that's, eight of them have been completed. throughout the city area after that testing, and that's, eight of them have been completed. Now, we slowed down a bit because of that storm that came through, and we replaced some additional poles that happened to break when the trees took them down. So, we've, they've been working very hard. And in some of this most recent weather, it makes it pretty tough. Isolation switches. Mr. Sheldon stated that his electric department will be installing isolation switches in the vicinity of Long Drive, which will help downtime during power outages. Other business, electric circuit demand load, twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen. Mr. Harrell presented the committee with a copy of the current demand loads and readings for twenty-eight, twenty-nineteen, which shows how much improvement has been done in the past year to our electric department. We had certain lines that were significantly over, had overages in them, and we've been working on balancing them out to reduce the demands on certain circuits. And if you'd seen the charge statement, we've accomplished quite a bit there. So, we're very appreciative of that, and are gonna continue working in that area. Mutual aid. We had the city of Jackson call for some assistance, and if you know where Jackson is, that's down towards Boo Hill. So, we dispatched some folks down there, and we assisted out for a very short time, and they found it, we were significantly appreciated. We've added up for trip. Personnel update. Add an apprentice lineman three, grade six position. Mr. Harrell was recommending adding a apprentice lineman three to, and to move to closed session for discussion personnel. I concur. Water sewer department. Mr. Eldridge stated that his department's been busy catching up on repairing yards in the city with more yards to complete. No sewer backups this month, and the treatment plan is running well. Department has also been busy painting wellhouses in the city as ongoing maintenance program. Electric department. Mr. Sheldon stated his department had seven outages, eight streetlights, four trees, and seven miscellaneous work orders for the month of June. Electric department also changed out some poles, finished underground primary to Briar Point, installed isolation switches, and worked on the right-of-way clearing near Broadway. Gas department. Mr. York stated his department extended the main line to the Parker Fine Arts Building and will have to replace the heater and regulator when the project is closer to completion. Still working on corrosion control, which is required by the Public Service Commission. There was a necessity for a closed session. We went into it in regards to the Missouri revised statutes. Six-ten-point-oh-two-one, one-two, and three for personnel, real estate, and legal. A motion was made by Councilman Conley going to closed session at four-twenty-three and seconded by Councilman Wilson. Motion carried, and we came out at four-fifty-seven PM. And at that point in time, Councilman Wilson made a motion to approve the change to the salary schedule regarding apprentice lineman positions and journeyman lineman grade increases. Councilman Conley seconded, and the vote was held, all in favor. Having no further business, the meeting adjourned at four-fifty-seven PM. Next meeting scheduled August sixth at three-thirty PM.
And utilities, always busy. So many things going on. Do any of you have any questions for Mike? And I believe Mr. Harrell told me that we had, mutual aid is such a wonderful thing. And, you know, you have mutual aid with your neighboring cities. And I believe Mr. Harrell told me that St. James has been helping us do a couple of things because we had helped them.
I think we helped them, and I think they paid us back, was it earlier? Recently, to help us get a line last week to get a, kind of a critical line to redo.
So, that's just another good example, though, of why you want mutual aid between the cities. So, good job there, Mike. Finance and Human Resources Committee, Councilman Liberty.
The meeting was called to order at five PM. All committee members were present. There was a review of the bills, and the committee voted to approve the bills and to pay them. Monthly budget review account status. Mr. Harrell reported, committee, that as of this date, we had over three-point-eight million in Citibank account, but one-point-three million in restricted account, and seven-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand in useful money. Mr. Harrell stated even the large in-and-out monies were still in good financial condition. There was a proposed ordinance adopting salary schedule changes. I moved to closed session. Grant update. Mr. Harrell stated that we have notice to proceed on recreational trail grant. He stated that a new request for bids had gone out for work. Airport under grant, since the first one was two-hundred thousand over budget. We still received only one bid from the same contractor in the same amount. Mr. Harrell stated a need for closed session for legal personnel and real estate in accordance with our SMO six-ten-point-zero-two-one, one-two, and three. The committee moved to closed session. Returned back to open session at five-thirty-five. Motion was made recommending a letter of appointment of John Doyle as assistant city administrator. And the committee all approved and voted to have that drop before the city council. Meeting was concluded at five-thirty-seven PM. Next meeting will be August fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Very good. And a lot of important stuff going on in that committee also. And we are going to make some important decision here in just a moment, and want to talk to the public about it just briefly. And I want to remind the public that for the last year, we have been putting in motion the framework for replacing some very important people in our city. If you remember, last year, we replaced Carol Welch, as she retired. And Michelle Brown became our city clerk. Next year, we're going to be losing our chief finance officer, Stephanie Luthen, at some time. And we do know for sure that we're probably gonna lose our city administrator in the June time period. So, Mr. Harrell's going to be retiring. Stephanie will be retiring, and the mayor will be retiring. But that's a whole different process, okay? We want to set in motion the plan that we have for replacing Mr. Harrell. And so, we're going to do that tonight. And Mr. Harrell, I'm gonna let you talk about Mr. Doyle.
Okay, Mayor, as you know, we've been talking some time about the transition plan, and it's been successful thus far. And this is another step in that process. And Mr. Doyle's been working as a city engineer for a couple of years now, so he's well familiar with the city and our projects. He's a UMR graduate, you know, in civil engineering. He's worked for Archer Engineering and the Department of Natural Resources. We've always found him to have a common sense approach. He's very knowledgeable in the areas of utilities and utility engineering. He's always easy to work with. And get, you know, it's been, it's been a pleasure to have him on our team. So, we're looking to expand his role. He'll be the assistant city administrator slash city engineer. He'll handle a lot of the smaller kind of engineering tasks, and also do some training with me on the different things to, you know, round out his experience, including looking at, you know, the airport, the finance, the finances of the city, our budget process, use ports, the parks, personnel issues. So, I think he is looking for it. He's working very hard in his engineering job now. I think he's surveying the Missouri River, depth of the Missouri River. But we're looking to bring him on in October timeframe so he can start with the budget process and round out his experience with city management.
And again, we've been discussing this for several months. I know we have a couple of new people on our board, but I believe both you gentlemen are familiar with John, and you know his background. I would say on our appointment letter that it probably should say October first instead of October of.
We're not actually sure when he'll be free, so we left it kind of open, but the intent was to be October, around October first. But if he got delayed in his current, he needs to finish his current contract. But we anticipate it would be October first, Mayor.
I am gonna say something else, okay? Sometimes I start talking and I can just see Bruce's face, you know, and he's kind of going, "Oh, my gosh, she's talking again." But let me say, because Bruce does not like to be talked about. And we're gonna miss you so much. You have done so much for the city.
Mayor, it's been enjoying. It's, it's fun for me. I like working with the mayor and city council. And I like working with their staff, and I think we make a great team to accomplish a lot of good things for the city.
So, then I always say this about Mr. Harrell. We kind of got a topher with you because you're a banker. And so, you were always good with finance. And I can think back when you took office and some of the things that were changed right away, Stephanie, remember, that made such a difference in our city. And so, we got a topher from you. Well, I would say that with John Doyle, we're gonna get another topher because he's an engineer. And he will be able to take care of some of the smaller projects that we have going on in the city and will really save the city money, I would think, in the long run. That, of course, does not mean that he will do every job. Big jobs, obviously, we will have to have, hire someone. Grant projects, we'll have to hire someone. But I think, again, that all of us are on board with John. But I'm going to ask you tonight to accept this letter of appointment for John Doyle as the assistant city administrator slash city engineer effective October of this year. So that that gives him about six months to work with Mr. Harrell. I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Sean, and a second by Clarence. And Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Councilman Farne?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Yes.
Thank you.
That is a unanimous vote of support for John. And Bruce, I would hope that you call him tomorrow and tell him that.
Sure will.
Give him that news. He would be looking forward to it.
Madam Mayor, I do have a question.
Yes.
On this thing. We've only gotten one bid twice. What do we do?
One bid. What are we talking about?
On the airport. Well, we'll probably have to discuss that with the airport board and with MoDOT.
I was still on John Doyle.
Aviation section. That's, that's not on the one we're passing tonight. It's probably one that will come up at the next meeting. So, we haven't, we haven't solved that problem yet.
I don't even know what he was talking about.
He was talking, we mentioned that we only, only got one bid on kind of installing the, the, it was mentioned in the finance committee.
Oh, okay.
We only got one bid to do the modifications for the terminal.
Terminal, okay, okay.
And it's considerably higher than the engineers' estimate, so we haven't solved that problem. MoDOT Aviation's gonna be through to address that, and with their engineers, and probably with the contractor to see if there's any cost savings that we can, we can do.
Anything, any other questions?
I'd, I'd like to follow up with that. Can a general contractor do the work, or does it have to be a specific airport contractor?
It was open to any, basically, general contractor.
Any other questions over here? Okay, so, we, again, I think did something pretty big tonight by setting in motion Mr. Doyle. Police Committee, Councilman Liberty, and before you start, Clarence, let me say, I want to remind everybody that we discussed this last month, that MoDOT had done a traffic study on Waynesville Hill. And they have removed the twenty-five mile-per-hour speed limit going up the hill. Up the hill. You notice on the right, there is no twenty-five anymore. And I believe that's all we have to do. That's not our jurisdiction, so we do not have to have an ordinance for that. So, the public is welcome to head up the hill when the light changes. But coming down, remember that they told us, they ruled against changing that twenty-five because of the big trucks that come down that hill, and the fact that they need time to slow down. So, going up, you can now go forty miles an hour. Clarence?
The meeting was called to order at three-oh-three. Discussion regarding animal control and beekeeping ordinances and limiting number of animals per household and dangerous animal. Mr. Harrell stated the city was unable to find another name for animal order so the terminology would remain in the order.
That is kind of severe, isn't it?
Mr. Harrell made a few changes, including changing the number of animals to six on exhibit fee. He also stated he would like to change Animal Control Commission to Police and Emergency Services Commission. There was a proposed ordinance to keep fees in residential area. Mr. Harrell asked that we would hold off another month before passing the ordinance, and the committee agreed. Committee discussed the distance from lot lines to neighbors' houses that beehives should be located. Mr. Harrell stated beehives cannot be located within active utilities. Committee members agreed, continued discussing at next month's meeting. We did have a citizen show up after the meeting had started. I asked her if she had anything to address with the city council, or the committee. And she stated that she was concerned with what the new ordinances was gonna state on how many animals you were allowed to have. And after it was explained to her, she was pleased with the answer. Enhanced security for city park. Mr. Harrell stated.
I think we've mentioned all that several times.
Daniel Shelton, his research and security system. And police department update, grant update. Chief Cordova stated the grant covering the radio for the new police car, and that he's just waiting for the car to be delivered so they can get the equipment installed. He stated grant will cover installation of the equipment. Personnel update. Chief stated Officer Watson put in his resignation, and Officer Hoard has applied for the position. Having no further business, the meeting was adjourned at three-thirty-nine PM. Next scheduled meeting, August first, at three-thirty.
Very good. That was a short meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions for the police committee? Okay, moving on. Airport, and Mr. Wilson. Sean?
All right, I'm gonna start off by saying if I mispronounce anybody's name, I'm sorry. But the meeting took place on June twenty-fifth at three PM. It was called to order by the chairman, Mayor Lawrenson. We had a quorum. The minutes was approved from the April twenty-third meeting and the motion to pass. They was accepted as published. We did have some guests at this meeting. We had Ms. Pirouette, Kent Thomas, Robert Hawthorne, and Wayne Tokas. Am I saying that right?
Tokars.
Tokars. All right, so, we had those, those guests that was there. And Mr. Hawthorne and Tokas asked the committee of the airport if they had a QR code. They wanted to implement a QR code on the marketing materials to be used by the soldiers. And also, Kent Thomas stated that would get with Aaron to, to see if it could work on getting one of these in the, in the future. Ms. Pirouette stated that the Hertz in the terminal will be closing on July thirty-first due to the lack of demand. So, the Hertz on the, on the terminal, on the installation will be closing. Reports from the staff. Mr. Harrell reviewed the May budget. It was, a motion was passed. It was unanimously approved, the May budget. And also, Mr. Harrell stated that the airport board bylaw stated the organizational meeting should be held annually in August. He also shared that there was interest in adding more members to the board and recommends considering changing the board from seven to nine members, with four representing St. Robert and four representing Waynesville, with one member at large. The members will, the members of the board will consider this and make a decision in August. The April, I mean, airport operations manager, Mike Guy, stated that May fuel sales are still down, but they should pick up in the month of June. He also stated that his staff is, is working on area beautification and cutting grass in accordance to their regulation. New business, the terminal area master plan agreement. Mr. Harrell presented a copy of the proposed terminal area master plan agreement with the board, and he stated that the cost would be over three-hundred thousand. And he stated that the cost would be over three hundred thousand dollars, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It will cover, be covered by two million, two million dollars of the appropriate funds that have been granted to the airport. Bruce made a motion to forward the proposal and it was unanimously passed. Old business, the Parallel Taxway. Mr. Mayor Lawrenson stated that he visited and they have, there has been great progress that has been done to the taxiway by Bloomsdale so far. Mr. Harold stated that we're getting weekly updates from the contractors and submitted multiple payments as the project progressed. Commercial terminal expansion. Mr. Harold stated that the bid opening held on June twelfth of two thousand nineteen, which we kind of heard a little bit about that already. But the bid, it was one bid and it was a bid a hundred and three percent over budget. So it'll be another bid that opens July ninth, two thousand nineteen. Mr. Harold reviewed the map application with the board. He stated that we have applied for a total of sixteen million dollars. Then we'll move on to marketing updates, SOP marketing. Mr. Harold presented the board with the SOP marketing report provided by Aaron. Kent Thomas stated that the airport's online response seems to be growing much better than, than any, anything in print. The Air Services Promotion Grant. Amber Box stated that the Air Service Promotion Grant has been successfully closed out for the year. She stated that the cities utilized over seventy-two thousand dollars of the, seventy-two thousand dollars and sixty-four, seventy-two thousand and sixty-four dollars of the seventy-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars awarded.
That's pretty good, girls, guys.
And Ms., Ms., Mr. Harold stated that we have applied for more funds to continue our marketing efforts and conduct route studies to see if any additional services for the tour riders or the, our riders, excuse me. And the last thing, other business. There was a recommendation to reach out to MoDOT to see if we can get the airport signs on I fifty, the I forty-four exit signs to give more visibility to the airport. Also, Bill Taylor stated that he was informed by a friend who was trying to access the airport and they were told at the front gate that there was no airport on the installation. And the last point is the Chairman, the Chairman of the Board stated that the next meeting will be held on Tuesday, July twenty-third, one twenty nineteen, at the Waynesville City Hall at three PM. Bruce Harold made a motion to adjourn the meeting. It was seconded by Bill Taylor. And the motion for the meeting will adjourn at three twenty-four PM.
Very good. Any questions for Sean? Okay, we do have an ordinance connected to the airport. This is Ordinance twenty-three seventy-one. Counselor?
Thank you. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an aviation project consultant agreement between the City of Waynesville, City St. Robert, and Burns and McDonald Engineering Company, date fixing and effective date. And ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an aviation project consultant agreement between the City of Waynesville, City St. Robert, and Burns and McDonald Engineering Company, date fixing and effective date.
Very good. I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mike, second by this Mike. Okay, and are there any questions or comments here before we vote? All right, I think this is, again, just a lot of the jobs that we've already started.
Mayor, this is Terminal Area Master Plan for three hundred and fifty-six thousand. It's one of the steps to get a new terminal. And this is, as you remember, the governor came down with two million dollars. This is part of that two million dollars.
I remember it well.
Okay, and this is a hundred percent grant. Usually we have a match, but this is unusual that we have a hundred percent grant. This is completely paid for by the state of Missouri.
Very good. We're laughing because that's when I fail. So this is, again, Ordinance twenty-three seventy-one. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Councilman France?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes with unanimous vote. Economic Development, Bill Farnum?
Committee meeting on July second at five PM. No citizens were present to ask questions, so we moved on to business. Our main discussion was Airbnb and possibly some regulations or ordinances for the future. It's going to be looked into, a little bit more research by Mr. Harold and we'll get back with the council. Economic Development, we discussed the business spotlight and we were told that this month, and we just saw communication for research. And we have next month's proposed individual. Can I name the receiving?
I believe so. I believe they've already called them.
Okay, Business Graphics is who we have proposing with the office meeting. Mr. Harold stated Townefield Plaza had a new owner. We talked about special events real quick. With Old Sellers Day coming up, July twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. And the Route sixty-six yard sale on August second to third. The Buckhorn Bluegrass Festival on the thirtieth. And the MRPC annual banquet, which we hosted at Ryanville on October twenty.
Lot of big events coming up. And of course, the Bluegrass Festival is out at the Shrine Club. And they, if you like bluegrass music, I'm telling you, they have a lineup that'll knock your socks off, so check it out. Just wanted to mention on Airbnbs, I was talking to a fellow mayor of mine recently and she said one thing to really watch out for there, on that Bruce, is that some of these Airbnbs want to sell themselves as event sites. And that you really don't want that in your residential area, unless you know you want to have a home where there's two hundred cars all of a sudden appear. So that's something we need to be sure and remember. Any questions for Bill? Okay?
We did have a very quick closed session. And lasted about nine minutes and we came out closed session and adjourned.
Very good. And, you know, I would just say on behalf of the city that I think the sale of the Townefield Plaza area is a very positive thing. And already seeing a lot of improvements there. And so excited to welcome those people to our community. We have a new business over there, Freedom Axe, Freedom Axe throwing, throwing. And I've been there. I've tried it. So I challenge all of you guys to go try throwing the axes, okay? I never succeeded in getting it stick, but boy, I threw it, I'm going to tell you. And I gather that they are very, very popular and wonderful people. I've met the owners. They're wonderful people. And let's see, we have other business tonight. And before we get started with that, I believe I'm going to say a couple of things and then I believe Bruce has some things to say also. And mostly saying this for the public, and this, of course, concerns the medical marijuana issues. And something that we've said all along is that the City of Waynesville is being proactive in this. We're one of the few cities who have completed passing ordinances concerning our person, our police, planning and zoning, working on our personnel issues. I believe the MML magazine last month, Bruce, had a whole article on personnel that I thought was interesting. But we are open to discussion. Obviously, if a company comes to us, we're going to talk with them. But I want to say this to the public. Applications are being accepted by the, by the State of Missouri. They are, of course, going to be limited. And I have the numbers for you. For the State of Missouri, there's going to be sixty growth facilities. There's going to be eighty-seven manufacturing centers or businesses. There's going to be a hundred and ninety-two dispensaries. And that is over eleven, is that eleven districts or nine? I believe it's nine districts. And that means in our district, which is District Four, Congressional District, we'll have twenty-four licenses. And I believe that covers, Keith, do you know how many counties Vicki covers? I want to say that it's nine. Maybe even more. So I knew, I was going to look that up and I forgot. But it is Congressional Districts. And I will say this, that in my opinion, from the things that I've read and studied, that most likely, there will be one dispensary in our area. There's going to be one or two growth facilities in our area. And, and I'm going to use the phrase most likely. We do have businesses that have approached us and offered earnest money because they're interested in our industrial park. And let me again say to you that in the City of Waynesville, that is about the only place that you can have a growth facility or a manufacturing facility. Because you need industrial zoning. Okay, we may very well see a dispensary somewhere else in the city. And so just kind of keep your eyes on that. But I, I wanted the public to know that this is not going to be something that's going to be all over the city. It, it is going to be very controlled. There will be a limited number of these licenses given. And so I believe that will come out probably in December. So, Mr. Harold, would you maybe discuss with the public just what we're going to do here tonight?
Yes, Mayor, we do have basically four different proposals from three different companies for locations in our industrial park. Of course, it's already been zoned. I think it appeals to different businesses because it's already zoned and our ordinance is already in place and it seems to be an ideal location. You know, in compliance with the state law and our ordinances, away from churches, daycares, and schools. The first one is from Missouri Essentials and it's amended letter of intent. It's, we already approved their letter of intent sometimes ago, a few months ago, I believe. And this new letter of intent removes all the conditions in the original LOI, except they only have one condition now, that's that they obtain a license from the State of Missouri. And they were looking to lease or lease purchase or perhaps buy straight out our, our spec building in that lot. And they also have a option on the adjoining lot, the first right of refusal. Origins has submitted a letter of intent. They want to buy our lot six. They buy lot six in industrial park for a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars at six percent interest over a sixty-month period. And they're offering us a non-rentable deposit to hold that property. Nineteen thirteen Holdings, they've offered a letter of intent. They want to lease lot seven and participate with the city and the city would build a shell building. They would pay a monthly lease payment of ten thousand per month to the city with a buyout option at the end of five years for six hundred and eighty thousand. Nineteen thirteen Holdings with another sub-company has put a option or contract to purchase lot one in the industrial park. They purchased that lot for a hundred and fifty-five thousand. They put some earnest money down on that as well. And that would be intended to be a medical marijuana dispensary. So these other buildings would be growth facilities, potentially growth facilities and manufacturing facilities. As the mayor stated, we may, that's all dependent on how many licenses the State of Missouri has. We may see one in our industrial park. We could say, see more than one or we, or we could see zero. So it's all dependent on what the State of Missouri approves. Any, do you have any questions? I kind of covered all four of the agreements kind of briefly, but I'll be glad to answer any more questions.
And we have discussed this in detail in the executive session. Anything? Okay, we have four ordinances. The first one is Ordinance twenty-three seventy-two. Counselor?
Okay. Twenty-three seventy-two, an ordinance amending the building purchase and lease option agreement with Missouri Essentials LLC regarding the city industrial park building and properties. And ordinance amending the building purchase and lease option agreement with Missouri Essentials LLC regarding the city industrial park building and properties.
Very good, and I entertain a motion. Motion by Dr. Brown, second by Mike Curtis. Are there any comments or questions? Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Yes.
Very good. This is Ordinance twenty-three sep-, I'm sorry, that ordinance passed.
Right.
Ordinance number twenty-three seventy-three. Counselor?
Thank you. An ordinance approving a contract for the purchase of lot one in the Waynesville Industrial Park by LLO Holdings LLC, fixing and effective date. An ordinance approving a contract for the purchase of lot one in the Waynesville Industrial Park by LLO Holdings LLC, fixing and effective date.
Very good. I entertain a motion. Motion by Sean, second by Ed. Are there any comments on this one or questions? Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Councilman France?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
That ordinance passes. We have Ordinance twenty-three seventy-four. Counselor?
Twenty-three seventy-four is an ordinance approving a lease with option to purchase for lot seven of the Waynesville Industrial Park by Nineteen Thirteen Holdings LLC, fixing and effective date. An ordinance approving a lease with option to purchase for lot seven of the Waynesville Industrial Park by Nineteen Thirteen Holdings LLC, fixing and effective date.
Very good. I entertain a motion. Motion by Clarence, second by Ed. Any questions or comments?
Mike says we're going to do a thirty thousand square foot building if this comes to fruition. Are they looking to be able to get into this building? I mean, you don't build thirty thousand square feet over.
That would basically be up to our, our, our time schedule that we'd have to coordinate, of course, with them. You're right, it would take some time to do that.
Okay, anything else? Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Councilman France?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that ordinance passes. Again, I would say to the public that these licenses are very limited. And be sure to do your reading and do, do your research a little bit before you make comments. Okay, and let's see.
There's one more, twenty-three seventy-five.
Yes, we, we have one more left.
Yeah.
Ordinance number twenty-three seventy-five, Counselor?
And that's actually with Origins LLC. There's a change in the title. An ordinance approving a contract for the purchase of lot six in the Waynesville Industrial Park by Origins LLC, fixing and effective date. An ordinance approving a contract for the purchase of lot six in the Waynesville Industrial Park by Origins LLC, fixing and effective date.
Okay, did everybody get that? It should be Origins.
Yeah.
Okay, I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mike, second by Mike, second by Mike Curtis. And questions or comments? Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yeah.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that ordinance passes, so off we go. Guys, we're coming to the end here and I will be asking you to make comments in just a moment. Mr. Harold, would you like to go over your report real quick?
Yes, Mayor, of course, I think they reviewed the highlights of the budget report at, at Finance Committee. But I would like to state the use tax is still doing good. You know, we budgeted, originally budgeted forty thousand, got eighty-four thousand in. And I think we projected, our new number was one hundred and thirty-two thousand, but we hopefully will beat that number as well. So that's still, that's still doing good. And also like to, I'm kind of proud to report a lot of things you said that we're working on in, in your committee reports. So you can see pictures and you can see the progress that's been accomplished. Whether it was installing the isolation switches, which helped improve our electric reliability, the work they've done on rebuilding the wellhouse number two. You know, Jack and his crew replaced that sewer line on Home Avenue. We're doing a lot of work on GW Lane. So we're, we're accomplishing a lot of good projects for the good of the city. Just to hit on the personnel updates, Robert Moreau resigned his position. And part of our transition plan was to send Amber Box to the Assistant Finance Officer position. And we hired Miriam Jones, or Miriam Jones was promoted to the Executive Assistant. And we're in the Q and A, Sadie, Thomas?
I think her by nose, sir.
She says thank you. So subject, subject care questions, Mayor.
Very good. So let me just say a word and then I'm going to go down, we'll start with Bill down here. But I was honored last night to attend the, a dinner for the mayors of the county. And of course, there's five of us and we were all five there. And two of the issues that were discussed was the, is it called reevaluation of taxes, reassessment of taxes? A lot of discussion about that. And so I think as a city, that's something we need to be looking at and paying attention to. I believe St. Robert is even having a special meeting tonight to discuss the impact of that on them. Another thing that was discussed among the mayors was the internet use tax. And you know, I can always say to people, shop local when you can. You know, we're, we're fast losing our brick and mortar stores because people are buying online. And again, that's why it was so important for cities in Missouri to pass this internet use tax. Because that's money we will not ever see because people are buying online. And now, obviously, we're And now, obviously, we're going to see it, and we're going to be able to do, uh, more with our roads, so, uh, you know, I think the other mayors were very interested in what our strategy was and how we went about, uh, getting that passed. So, uh, we intend to do the mayor meeting every three months, and I believe I'm in charge of the next one. I'll think of some good place to take them, okay? So, Bill, we'll start with you. Uh, council comments? Do you have anything you'd like to share? You're going to pass. Okay, Sean?
Uh, I don't have a list of things to correct, but I will say, just thank you for, um, you know, since I've been a part of the City Council, um, these last few months, and I wanted to announce publicly that this is my last meeting this month, this City Council meeting, so I'll see you next month. But, uh.
Well, that got my attention.
But I just wanted to say thank you for the, the staff, and, uh, and they do a tremendous amount of work with a number of people, and everybody's always helpful, um, so I just say thank you to, to everyone, and job well done.
Very good. Mike?
I'm thinking about our city employees that have to work outside in this kind of weather, police officers and those people, uh, be careful out there. It is hot, and, uh, just, just be careful.
So, Mike, you need to also tell the City Council where you're heading tomorrow.
Tomorrow? No. Saturday, I'll be heading to Iowa for the fourth time to ride my bicycle across to Iowa. So, uh, we're going to do that again.
Your Kathy, your Kathy.
I'll be following Kathy. She's the lead.